Good evening, welcome to the August 18th, 2025 West Claremont School Board Meeting. Mr. Romano, please take a roll.
Mr. Patton.
Present.
Mr. Rudy.
Present.
Mr. Chumley.
Present.
Ms. Amborn.
Present.
Mrs. Spencer.
Present.
All present?
Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us testify in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First up, it looks like the motion to adopt the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion? I'm moved. Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Amborn, thank you. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Ms. Amborn.
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Is it Josh? Yeah.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'd like to welcome Wes Claremont High School senior David Lack to the front of the room. Do your rocking marks. As a junior, David achieved an extraordinary milestone this past June, earning the title of state runner-up in high jump. After claiming the Eastern Cincinnati Conference Championship, David advanced to the Ohio High School Athletic Association State Track Meet in Columbus. Competing against the very best in Ohio, he soared to a personal best of six feet nine inches, securing his place on the podium. Please join me in congratulating David on this extraordinary achievement.
Next up, looks like a presentation from Becky.
There we go.
How about that? All right.
I'm just here to show some highlights from our back-to-school celebrations we've had over the past couple of weeks. First, we had Police Night Out. We were at all three Batavia, Pierce, and Union Townships. And despite three nights of rain, we were able to connect with hundreds of community members. This was especially important this year because we had a new superintendent and three new principals who are able to connect with countless families, so. See if I got this. Uh-oh.
All right. I'll do it.
Okay.
Is it doing it on there? Nope. Objectivators and presentation.
There's a few more slides. I promise.
Sounds like great presentation.
I'll try it.
It's like my remote at home.
Yeah.
Did you turn the remote on?
Oh, no. Okay, but I.
It's still not working.
It's still not working.
Yeah, point it towards day.
No.
No, that's not it. It's not working from here either, so we'll just, we'll do it this way.
Technology's great when it works. So funny.
See, it's not even working when I do this. It's kind of a presentation.
At this point, I need to throw a.
Which presentation?
Remote control to teach.
Try it again.
Which way do I?
Um, which? There we go.
Okay, now I'm not too far. There we go. Okay. We also wanted to give a little shout out to our new teachers. This was from the New Teacher Orientation. This year, we have 55 new teachers, counselors, and school psychologists who joined the district this year, so we want to give them a welcome to the team. Let's see here. Okay.
We'll use it. Just pretend to not hit it.
Oh, oh, okay. We also had the Back-to-School Bash on August 2nd. The whole Learner Network hosted this, and it was to help families with need. We ended up helping 235 students with things like haircuts, school supplies, clothes, shoes, being reregistered. Oh, you went too fast.
That's the other one there. The other way.
Go back, the other one.
They're there.
Yep, there. Okay. So we just want to thank all of our volunteers and our community partners for helping with that big event. Here we go. Now, this is the first day back to school. These are just some photos we took at all the elementary schools in the area. Today was the first day that students, all students were back in, but this has just been from the past couple of days. And finally, this was something that's really cool. This is the second year that I've experienced this, but this is at the middle school, and it's called WEB, which stands for Where Everyone Belongs. And this is just where eighth graders who are in this WEB program, they get to welcome the sixth graders to middle school. It's a great, it's a really great event, and these are just some pictures from it.
So next up is public speaking. At each meeting, the board president will recognize any visitors who wish to be heard. They are asked to, which they did, thank you. Visitors who wish to address the board are asked to state their name, address, and the school or organization. Remarks must be addressed to the board and should be brief, three minutes, and to the point. Speakers may offer such things as objective criticism, suggestions regarding school operations or programs. The board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel or against any persons connected with the school district unless those complaints have first been addressed through the individuals, departments, or administration involved. We do have one, and I'm going to apologize, I'm going to mispronounce the name. Who's my one speaker? Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to mispronounce it, and I don't even want to butcher it, so yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ms. Ray Burton Shaw. You're D.J.'s mom, but very proud to be here and very thankful for everything you guys have done. I know we love Wes Claremont High School. Mr. Miller has been wonderful, and the Treasures have been wonderful. We thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Sorry.
No, you're good. Thank you. Again, congratulations and thank you guys so much. Next up is our consent agenda moving on, is the Human Resource Personnel. Looks like that'll be Josh.
Good evening. In front of you is the Personnel Agenda for August 18th, 2025. On the agenda today, we have the resignation of one teacher, five paraprofessionals. This agenda also includes the proposed hiring of one teacher, five paraprofessionals, and two part-time paraprofessionals. On the agenda, we have the proposal to suspend the contract for one teacher pending licensure. On this agenda, we have the proposed approval of extended days for one teacher. We also have multiple salary adjustments for one payroll director and salary adjustments for multiple teachers. These new placements occur for our teachers, continuing their education and adding master's degrees and other coursework over the summer. On this agenda, we have the proposed approval of supplemental contracts for athletic support staff, multiple arts directors, multiple coaches, substitute custodian, paraprofessional, and teacher. We also have the approval for multiple school volunteers across the district. On this agenda, we have the following FTE adjustments: the reduction of one assistant superintendent, one dean, two teachers, and the addition of one director, one help desk supervisor, and one teacher. These adjustments are made, and they reflect kind of the different things that have happened over the course of the last month. Unfortunately, Dr. Foltz would not be able to go back to his old position, so we've kind of trapped him here if that's, if that goes through. On this agenda, we have the daily rate for teachers on pending licensure. Finally, in the work beyond the contract section, are the proposed approval for payments for multiple teachers that attend our New Teacher Orientation, multiple teachers that attended CPI training over the summer, one teacher that will serve as our gifted coordinator, one teacher that will serve as our data infrastructure system support, one teacher that will serve as the learning management support, one teacher that attended an IP during the summer months, and multiple teachers that served as cooperating teachers, or will serve as cooperating teachers for our local universities. Personally, this is exciting, 13 total. That means we got our new hires in the pipeline, so that's great. This concludes the review of our personnel agenda submission for your consideration. Thank you.
I have a question about the work behind the contract. That 4:50, is that spread out for the three days that they come, or is that 4:50 each day?
I would need to get clarification on that to make sure it's, I answer appropriately, but I would be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
1:50.
It's a total.
It's a total.
1:50 a day.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. I'm just clarifying it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Randy.
Welcome back, OFCC again. So last month, or last meeting, we gave the information about the acceptance that we had in July meeting from the OFCC. With that, that was information only tonight, where I'm asking the board to authorize this in a resolution to accept the OFCC funding that they granted us from our previous master facility plan. Just a reminder, we can make adjustments to that, and we can segment that off into a smaller scope of project down the road, but we would want to accept the funding. Again, that's about a 20%, regardless of what project that we do. And again, that's the OFCC math, if you remember, that they only give us a certain number per their enrollment projections, which didn't include all of our students, but we would ask you to accept this and as a resolution tonight.
So that still keeps us in line to where we are?
Still keeps us in line. As we move forward, we know that we're not going to be in '25, but if the board were to decide to do something in '26, you have that option.
Okay, thank you.
Item 7.03 is request for approval of the minutes. Those were the minutes for the meeting held on August 4th, 2025. Item 7.04 is the list of donations. The recommendation is to approve those donations as presented. Union Township Firefighters Union donated $3,000 to the Back-to-School Bash and Christmas Event. Makino donated $1,500 to the Whole Child Assistance Fund. East Fork Region Kiwanis donated $250 to the Whole Child Assistance Fund. Dan and Betty Cooksey donated $50 to Amelia's student lunch charges for a book by Molly Lynn Dutini. Joan Sigmund donated $20 to Amelia's student lunch charges for a book by Molly Lynn Dutini. Bonnie Nesbitt donated $50 to Amelia's student lunch charges for the same book, and Molly Dutini donated $50 to Amelia's elementary student lunch charges. Molly Dutini also donated crayons, markers, colored pencils to Amelia for classroom supplies. Raising Canes donated a gift basket for Wes Claremont Middle School WEB program. A&amp;A Safety donated eight street signs for Lim to Withinsville to Basco Elementary. There was an anonymous donation for three large bags of school supplies to Holly Hill Elementary for students in need, and Chick-fil-A donated 125 chicken sandwiches and condiments to Wes Claremont Middle School for WEB leaders training. It's recommended that the board approve those donations as read. Item 7.05 is a request to approve the authorization for the superintendent and treasurer to negotiate and execute contracts as presented. Those are the list of contracts that are provided, again, as noted, towards the beginning of the year, June for FY '26, July and August, there's kind of a higher volume of contracts done than most of the other months within the year. Item 7.06 is the request and the recommendation to approve the financial statements, the bills paid list, and investments for July 2025 as presented, the cash position records, annual spending plan, and other reports that are listed below. The consent agenda is items 7.01 through 7.06.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. You've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumley. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Ms. Amborn.
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Five yes? Thank you.
All right. So this time of year, we bring forward our updates on our strategic plan. So Ellie Preston is going to come forward to talk about it, and Dan's going to open up the presentation.
Good evening. So this evening, we just wanted to provide a real quick update, and it's not, I mean, the school year has just started, so it's not an update on the progress that we've made with the plan, but it's really an update on the progress that we've made in terms of how we plan to move forward with implementing our district's strategic plan. And so it's really meant to be a conversation with you around our strategy and around our intentional implementation of our plan. We have one slide, and, and that's really by choice and with intention. One of the things that I think we've, that we're really good in education is like alphabet soup. We have lots of acronyms for lots of things, and you need like, you know, a table of contents and some sort of like decipher, special decipher code to like help you understand all the things that, that we're talking about. And so this is really, and oftentimes, it feels like just initiative overload, one thing after the next, after the next, and, and it can get really confusing, and our priorities can get lost in that. And so this is, was really our, our, our best effort at really being able to both like literally and I guess figuratively, bring things under like the same roof, and really try to, to show the alignment and the connection between our district's strategic plan, between our, our work with Leader and Me as a framework for continuous improvement, and ultimately how it's, how we're wanting it to help us achieve our goals. And so just as a reminder, last year was the first year that we partnered with the Franklin Covey Organization around bringing Leader and Me to our district. And I will say, at first, it really, my own understanding and knowledge of it was really more specific to like the leadership development skills that we were going to, that, that we wanted to teach in all of our students. But what we've come to really more deeply understand over the past year is that it really provides us not only an avenue to teach leadership development in students, but really a framework for our entire district to use for continuous improvement. And so you'll see here the, you know, the Venn diagram around culture, leadership, and academics, and those are the three pillars, the three key areas that, that are important to us as an organization, and, I don't know, I just lost my, my sound here. Anyway, I can keep going. But leadership, culture, and academics are those three core areas that, that our continuous improvement efforts fall under. And so you'll see in our graphic here, the color-coded like windows, green, blue, and red, and those are really aligned with those areas of culture, academics, and leadership. And so. All right. Hello again. We're back. I'm really going to keep this on the stand. I don't want to feel like I'm getting ready to perform here. So, so this is really meant to show the intersection and the alignment between our district's strategic plan, elements of Leader and Me, and ultimately, the goals that we aspire to achieve. And so if you notice, like those bottom three layers, those are the foundational elements of our house, the foundation, the, the steps upon which our goals can be like accomplished. And so that first row, if you were to see, it says people, performance, and pathways, and place. So if we were going to quiz you, like where did those come from, people, performance, and pathways, and place? That comes from our new strategic plan, and that those are the goals, like the big overarching goals of our strategic plan, that we want all students to be educated in a safe, modern learning environment, that's the, the place, that we want all students to have access to a high-quality like group of educators, that's the people, and that we want all students to have access to a rigorous curriculum and support system to develop the academic and life skills that transfer. That's what that bottom pillar is really kind of all about, that those are foundational pieces upon which like we're, we're wanting to build our, our district. The second row comes from Leader and Me, and those are what are called core paradigms. And so paradigm is like a way that you see yourself, or a way that you see others, or a way that you see the world. And so one of the things that we're really learning from Leader and Me is that the things that we see, how we see one another, how we see students, how we see ourselves, that impacts the things that we do, the choices that we make, and ultimately, it impacts the results that we get. And so this like second row is really around those core paradigms, wanting to shift our perspective to see, for example, that everyone can be a leader. Everybody, all students, staff, they have the ability to be a leader, and when we start seeing that in ourselves and others, it impacts the decisions that we make about choices that we provide for students, or decisions that we make about staff, et cetera. So these core paradigms, everyone can be a leader, everyone has genius, change starts with me, like I'm the person who can, you know, to like channel Randy, like we all have our own 20 square feet, right? And so like we have the ability, change starts with us within that, that we want to empower students to lead their own learning, and that educators and families should partner to deliver, to, to help develop the whole person. So again, those are our core paradigms and the ways in which we're wanting to see ourselves and, and others. And that third like foundational pillar is around two elements, the leadership and life skills, so that's our, the seven habits of highly effective people that we're working to teach students, those leadership and life skills, the development of that through, at the elementary level, we have time every morning where that's part baked into like part of every day for students. Same thing at the middle school and at the high school, we've created like leadership development skills, so all students will have an opportunity to participate in those courses. And so that's one foundational piece of our approach. And then the second is around being able to make data-informed decisions that can help improve student achievement. And so what we're learning about is called the four disciplines of execution. And so like the first part of the four disciplines of execution is that you focus what's on, what's wildly important. Short is, is called WIG, so wildly important goal. What is the goal that we have as a district that is wildly important? And so we've, we've established a goal around increasing our district's performance index. So we talked a little bit about how that really encourages all students to continue to advance to the highest levels of achievement for themselves. So we've established a wildly important goal at the district level. Each of our buildings have established wildly important goals that are in alignment with our district's goal, as have grade levels, common courses, et cetera. We've, we have alignment across the district around what's wildly important. So that's kind of that first discipline of execution, is focus on what's wildly important. The second part of that is act on the lead measures. We don't ever want to wait for a whole year to figure out, did we actually like reach our goal? We want to establish rhythms over the course of the year where we're, we're monitoring our progress, where we're, as an organization, we want to be leading and learning. We want to, to know, to have a high degree of correlation between like the things that we're doing and the results that we get, so we can continue to replicate success. And so acting on the lead measures allows us to, to monitor that progress and to be responsive. If things that we're doing aren't getting us the results that we want, then we can make mid-course corrections and not have to wait for a whole year to have gone by before we would make modifications. And so that's the second part of those four disciplines of execution. The third part is to create a compelling scoreboard. Nobody like the, one of the analogies that one of our presenters gave was around bowling. Like if you were to put a sheet up right in front of the pins and bowl, like would that be any fun? No, like you want to see, did you actually knock pins over? Did you like win? Did you, how did you perform? The same thing is true with us. Like it's no fun to do, to do a bunch of things and to like actually not know if you're, the things that you're doing are winning or not. And so creating a compelling scoreboard is really around being able to keep track of what we're doing and to celebrate the successes and to like build positive momentum around, around our actions and the, the impact that they're having. So that's the third discipline. And then the fourth discipline is really around celebrating success, right? It's around being able to, to continue to, to hold ourselves, to create a cadence of accountability is like technically what the fourth one is, but it's around holding ourselves accountable. And for us, accountability is not about like, like forcing somebody into something, but accountability is more about a mutual feeling that you can count on me and I can count on you. Together, we can like accomplish any goals that we've established for ourselves. So that's these four disciplines of execution. It's something that across the entire organization, we're really working to, to build our skill sets for how we can leverage those, those tools to help us reach our wildly important goal. So those are like those foundational pieces. The, the middle of the house really represents the things that we're going to do, how we're going to work together. So the bottom is like, how are we seeing things? And how is the like way we're seeing things impacting the things that we are, the, the ways that we're, that we're working together? And so like I said before, the green, the blue, and the red represents action teams that we are forming across the district. We'll have district action teams as well as building action teams that are aligned to these areas. And if you notice, like there's one really big, more like a door and not a window, that is our achieving goals, like ultimately. Like ultimately, this is about us being able to achieve our wildly important goals. And each of these are, are important components to helping us be able to do that. And so, we'll be able to provide you updates over the course of the year with each of the action teams and the work that they're doing, but it's really all meant to be in service of our students and our district achieving goals. Not like in competition of, or, you know, sometimes, like we know people only have so much time. And so, this is really about being able to, in some ways, say no to something so that we can prioritize the things that, that matter most for us. And so, that, that middle really represents how we're go, the things that we're going to do. And if you get up to like the eaves of the house, you'll notice our portrait of a graduate, and you'll notice what became really important for us with our district's strategic plan around, we really want students who are prepared for anything, not just something. And the five stars and the, you know, peak of the roof represents, that is our goal. We want to be a five-star district. And so, these really, these then are like the results that we want to accomplish from the way that we're beginning to like see and approach our work, the, the ways that we're gonna work together, the things we're gonna do, ultimately to get us to these goals, the results that we, that we want to get. And so, this is something that we've shared with our district leadership team. We, we brought together twice, once in June and, and another time again in August, all of our building leadership teams together across the district to really have this not just be something that like lives, you know, on a, on a screen, but then like doesn't actually play out in practice. And so, this is something that we want, that we will be modeling ourselves. We're gonna learn by doing, like as an administrative team, this is how we're going to be structuring our work. And, and really, our desire is to, to build an aligned system where we're building capacity across the organization, to have this just be like how we do business, and to really build, you know, a collaborative culture where, you know, where we are leveraging these tools to help us just improve the ways of working. And, and honestly, this is like the work forever and ever. Like this is the work of continuous improvement, and we're hoping that by being able to like clearly articulate our priorities and what matters most, that it'll help people be able to like tune out some of the noise that, that comes, and to really just be able to, to focus on what matters most. So, that's the update on how we're planning to, you know, implement not only our strategic plan, but to really leverage Leader and Me for continuous improvement. And our goal is to really not just have Leader and Me schools, but to become a Leader and Me like lighthouse district, that, that can really, that we can be able to like celebrate and tell our story, not just to the area, but, you know, to the state and the, the country over time. So, we, we've worked really closely with consultants from Leader and Me. They really are partners where this isn't about us just like doing Leader and Me, but it's really about working in partnership to be able to leverage the tools for continuous improvement that they offer alongside of our district's unique goals and priorities and strategic plan, to really help us have, to, to not just like do what they say, but to leverage the tools that they have to help us accomplish our unique, our goals that are unique to us. So it's been a really great partnership, and we look forward to continuing this journey. Any questions?
Statements slash question. I, I assume since you've listed, listed all of those things, each one of those play an important role. And so, you as administrators, you guys are to, you know, help guide people to that. We as a board, is our way of helping and assisting by providing the tools and, and approving the, the things that you're saying that you're needing. So for example, the Leader and Me. In order for us to accomplish this goal, what's important for us as the board to then be able to approve the things that you're needing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Does that make sense?
It does. So, yeah, I mean, I think what we are continuing to do is to build a systematic approach to continuous improvement, and there are some really foundational pieces to that. Leader and Me being one of those. And so, you know, there comes a, a financial commitment to having access to, you know, those resources and supports. And so, in that particular example, absolutely. And it's our job to be able to then share with you the return on investment that has come from that. But ultimately, this is really about capacity building across the system, and there are gonna be pieces and parts kind of aligned with all of these things that are really essential parts of being able to make this happen. And, and so, yeah, I think if there's like a missing pillar, you know, for example, like a whole step missing, our foundation is not gonna be super strong, and, and we won't be able to ultimately get to where we'd like to be. So, so absolutely, that partnership is really essential for us.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
I would just wanna add that Ellie and her team have done an amazing job with this, and I've, and I've been in this, this game a while, and professional development can go really good or really bad sometimes. And they have, the way they have evolved this from a program to something that really is us is amazing. And to watch our leaders and our teachers embrace this, not as another thing, but like embrace this as, we want this to be our way of practice, we want this to be our way of work. Over the summer was also like, it was amazing. So, and I, I wanna just point out another part that Ellie said that we skipped over, but it was an important part. This helps us focus on what we need to do, and it lets us let go of those things that we don't, we no longer need to focus on. And that really makes what we do clear, and if we're clear, we're gonna be successful.
Yeah, I think we're all really good at making like to-do lists, but not often like to-not-do lists, right? And we just like add more things, and that's really what we're wanting to stop doing so that we, we really can elevate the time and the energy and the resources to the things that, that we believe are most aligned with us achieving the goals that, that you've established for us, and, you know, our, our aspirations as a district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie.
You look good. I understand it.
Thank you. Great. There'll be a quiz later on.
Well, not when?
So next, we have Randy Getbart talking about our policy first reading.
First reading. So, we talked a little about this before.
Randy.
I'm not loud enough, you can't hear me?
I told you to move the mic away a little.
Just be quiet. So, Policy 5136 is personal communication devices. The board was very proactive last year as we passed this. And we felt really good about it because we're, I thought we're way ahead of it, because we'd already implemented it for 24, 25 school year. Actually, Natasha and I and Greg worked with Columbus as well on this, and we felt really, really good about this. In August, Neola came out with a new template, and we, we followed that template to the T and felt really good about that. And then about seven days ago, House Department of Education or Do came out with a new definition of instructional day, which included no cell use during passing periods as well as lunch. And so, we scrambled. I went back and forth with legal, and basically, Neola had a different interpretation than the state. And the statute actually says school day, doesn't say instructional day, but as advice of our attorney, we, we follow the state mandate, and so, we need to make the adjustment to 5136. We followed everything in that as well, which identifies students, some of our medically fragile students, 504s, IEPs, and health concerns. And when, rest assured, this policy will not affect those students, that they'll have access to their cell phones, and so they monitor things with their cell phones on a day-to-day basis, period by period. This doesn't affect those. And I know those are questions out there that you might get. That will not impact this. The main change in 5130, or 5136 is the use during lunch and during passing periods. And so, it is spelled out now that students are not to be using those at any grade level during those times. Other things that specifies is that staff members can give students and can authorize students to use a personal communication device if it's related to the curriculum. For example, our photography class may use cell phones for that purpose of what they do during class. This is an adjustment, and the reason I wanted to put this in and get it in, because we started the year with this, and we wanna make sure our policy matches what we're doing. And so, I wanted to do a first reading tonight, do a second reading at the next board meeting. And I did receive the updated policies that I will be sending you this week, all 215 pages of them. So the policy committee, we will be scheduling a meeting to get together, and we will go through that process of going through a first and second reading throughout September. But this is a first reading, information purposes only, and then I'll come back with you for a second reading, then it will go into policy at the next meeting. I know it's in the news, I know there's a lot of questions. We did a lot of due diligence behind the scenes to find out what our neighbors were doing as well, and we feel very comfortable that we are along with, with other districts around us.
Thank you. You answered my question. Do males have anything else?
Superintendent comments, I wanna keep it brief. I'd wanna say we had a great start to the school year. On Thursday and Friday, we had staggered starts, but today was the first day that everyone was in class, in session. And I have to just give many, many thanks and kudos to our classified and certified staff. They did amazing job with, with getting the kids and working with them and helping them be successful the last three days, and our, our admin as well. Very smooth start, and, and I was told not to jinx it, but it was, I'm, I'm very proud of all of our staff and everyone that cares for our kids because of, they showed up, day one. They showed up, and they've been showing up for the last three, and, and I wholeheartedly feel they're gonna show up for the next 185. So I appreciate that. Police night out, I thought went really well. A lot of people came and visited our booth, and Becky took a lot of pictures, kids, adults, everything. So, almost too many pictures, but she loves to take pictures, so that went very well. And then I, our first home game, home football game is this Friday at 7:00 PM at the high school. So I invite everyone to come out and celebrate our team and our school as we take on...
Thank you, Dr. Holtz. Moving on to Treasurers' business.
Okay. I have two action items this evening. Item 9.01 is a request for authorization to execute an agreement to transfer excess property. I think over the past, you know, I've been asked the question, do we have property or assets that, that we should be or can be disposing of? I mean, there is the belief that if we have an asset, we should be utilizing, you know, that asset to the fullest. So, there's two, two parcels, two properties, or even one's a portion of a property that we determined is no longer needed by the district. And as we move forward with that, I want to, to, to connect with a couple things. Number one is, with a, with a property transaction, we don't do any of this without the legal involved or the attorney involved. It is, to say the least, kind of a complex thing that we just can't sell property, there's certain things we have to go through. The advantage of, of working with Union Township on these properties that are, that are available in the, in the township is that we can connect them to economic development. So we wanna make sure that we, we do get our fair value of the assets that we have and that property that we no longer need. But in addition to that, we wanna make sure that as we move forward, that they become revenue-producing for us, okay? So that, that what happens to those properties also becomes, you know, taxable so that they can, you know, help offset, you know, other property owner revenues that we get and other things. So, A, we get the fair value, B, that they become revenue-producing for us. And so, with item 9.01, this is a resolution authorizing the sale and transfer of real property to Union Township for economic development, redevelopment, and job creation. And that, you looked at the resolution, there's a couple things that it specifically determines and identifies, and I'm just gonna identify, goes down to the now there for beer resolves within a couple of sections, that one, and I'm just paraphrasing from those paragraphs, that the properties are no longer needed for purposes of facilitating and providing for the public education of students within the district, and we have determined that. Two, that the board president and treasurer of the board to execute a transfer agreement. So in other words, we go into a formal agreement that we execute where the properties do get transferred to the township, okay? That the board approves of that sale and transfer and conveyance of the properties to the township. And also note within that transfer agreement that as those properties are sold, the revenue does come back to the district for that. So, it is the recommendation and request for the board to approve the motion to authorize the superintendent and treasurer, board presidents to negotiate and execute an agreement to transfer excess property for economic development, redevelopment, and job creation within Union Township, Fairmont County, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. You've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second?
Second.
Spencer, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Why wouldn't we just go and sell these properties, just like if I wanted to sell my house, I call a realtor, I wanna sell my house? Why wouldn't we just use a realtor instead of using the Union Township?
Sure. That, that's a good question, and, and I think the answer lies in probably two-part response to that. One, the openness of just doing a bid, and, you know, can we do that? Yes. And somebody come in bidding on it, and we release it to the highest bidder, and quite frankly, not knowing and understanding what happens after that. And then two is the, the addition of that it is connected to economic development, which our job is, I mean, we are connected to economic development, but we're not the experts in it. And if there's experts in it, that's typically with a township, or with a county, or with an entity, that, that one of their major emphasis is economic development, and to do that. So, but yes, could we? The answer is yes, okay? But what's the best route for us to go? And, and I believe after talking with council and, and with others, that this would be the best route for the school district to go, to maximize the return back to us.
And then the money comes back to the school district, correct?
The, the value of the property comes back to the school district, A, and B, it becomes revenue-producing property.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Call please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Sandborn?
Yes.
Five yes. Thank you. Item 9.02, and this resolution is acknowledging Union Township tax and incremental financing extension and waiving the notice of, of the, the period. So, the township did serve us notice that they would like to extend a TIF that already exists by 15 years. We do acknowledge that. Does the board have to approve that extension? And the answer to that, that is no. But I think in an effort of transparency, that, that we wanna make sure that our community and people don't think we're, that we're not responding or not doing things, you know, publicly. This resolution acknowledges that we were served that notice, that they're going to extend that TIF, and then what, what that extension is really for. And within that agreement, I know it's not listed out, but I, these, this TIF goes back to 2005?
And five.
Okay. It is several properties, it's already in existence, and the availability or the ability for the township to do that does exist without the approval of the school district. The most important note that we have with it is that it is a make-whole agreement that exists with it. And, you know, again, what does that mean? That means that taxes that, that otherwise were assessed against the property owner, if not for the TIF, do come to the school district. The route that that goes through is that the, the property is abated, there is a pilot or payment in lieu of taxes, pilot's the acronym for payment in lieu of taxes, that's collected by the county auditor, paid to the township, the township and, and my office do the calculation of what that make-whole would be, which is basically the calculation of, of that tax revenue, and then that is then passed from the township to the school district. And then that is then passed from the township to the school district. So that's been in existence, the request to, excuse me, not a request, but the notification that that extension is going forward is there. And this resolution is acknowledging that notification to us, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Romano. You've heard the recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion?
Some move.
Mr. Rudy, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Sandborn, thank you. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Ms. Sandborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Five yes? Thank you. The two comments that I have, one, appreciate the board spending a good portion of their day, Saturday, at the retreat. I think we may have said it was nine to 12 and it ended up being nine to two. So there was overtime put in on that and I do really appreciate it. And it was very encouraging to me, the interaction that took place, that was there. I think one thing that was profound to me, that there was one question asked that eluded to probably a 15, 20-minute discussion, which was really, you know, to me, and it fit in really well with the whole explanation of the strategy that was there, you know, with it. So appreciate, you know, the cabinet, the board, superintendent taking the time out to do that because I thought that was pretty important to do. Secondly, on our area of advocacy, you know, we put our foot on the pedal from probably last December through June until the Biennium bill was passed. And, you know, sometimes you think that with the stroke of the clock from June 30th to July 1st, well, it's all done and the Biennium bill exists. And then, you know, we realized that there was the veto, right, with the governor of a few things. And then there was the override, one override. But we can't, we can't take our advocacy foot off the pedal. There are still some things out there that don't necessarily work for the district and in certain aspects, don't necessarily work for our community at all. And we need to continue to be advocates, not just for the district, but for the community as well. And continue communicating with our legislators, not just in this area, but I think others throughout the state that are proposing certain bills and certain things. I believe we are still a proponent of targeted tax relief and just not a sweeping, you know, you know, bill that may eliminate taxes and such. But we do need revenue coming to the district. But it needs to be, you know, in a way that is fitting, not just for the state, but for this district and for our community. So I guess the message is, we still need to put our foot to the pedal and keep advocating for what this community needs.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Moving on, it looks like board comments. I'll start with Mrs. Spencer.
Well, I'm excited for this year. I know everything, it's kinda new and different with Mr. Foltz, Dr. Foltz at the helm. But I think everything went really well. It sounded like everything went really well. And I know my grandchildren are very excited to get it started. Maybe not as much as we are, but they are very eager to go back to school and see their friends and all that stuff. But, and I appreciate Ellie breaking it down. I appreciate the visual with the steps and the pillars. And I appreciate, I know, all the time you took to do that. I appreciate it and it helps me get a hold of what's going on. But, yeah, I'm excited about the new year starting up. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Sandborn?
I just wanted to say Saturday was a really nice opportunity to get to see everybody and just to collaborate and to be involved and to hear what's going to happen this year. I just think that we're on an exciting year this year. And I'm glad that you're now officially our superintendent. And we look forward to working with you and doing great things this year. And I appreciate the cabinet team member being there Saturday. I know that takes away from taking care of grandkids, you know, and then being with your children. So I appreciate all of them that was there Saturday.
Thank you, Ms. Sandborn. Mr. Chumley?
Randy said no. I wanna piggyback off of that. I wanna thank our cabinet. They take the vast array of knowledge and information and they dumb it down for us. So I think it's great how they are able to feed us that information so easily. This job isn't always easy, but it's a lot easier with a team like this. So I do wanna thank you guys for taking your time out on a Saturday to join us. So, and I hope everyone has had a smooth start to school like we have. Everyone seems to be rolling pretty well and I hope that's the same across the district, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chumley. Mr. Rudy?
I'd like to thank you two for organizing and getting Saturday done. It was wonderful. It's nice to get so much good information. And secondly, great media coverage today. The district dies. I was watching the news, I still half asleep, and boom, there was Mr. Duel. He did a very nice job representing us.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Before I forget, because I tend to forget this, our next board meeting will be September the 8th. It is at 7:00 PM and it is here at the Civic Center. The statements that I'll make is, again, is more of a, definitely of a kudos. I appreciate the fact, you know, I've heard in the district, as long as I've been in the district, that we're, you know, we're looking under the rocks, we're turning over everything. And this is a clear show that that's what we're doing. We're being transparent to the community, we're trying to find ways. And so I appreciate that. And as we continue to find ways, one of the things that I think is important is that when we're looking at areas of the need of areas, we wanna make sure that it does not affect that house that we have built. Because again, you can't build a good house, solid house, on a weak foundation. So I wanna make sure that as we're looking at ways that we can perhaps save the district money, I don't want to affect the foundation of the house. And again, I appreciate everybody's interaction and everybody else's work that they put into this. It is, it does not go without notice. So, that is all that I have. I've rambled enough. I do not have a need to go into executive session. So at this point, it looks like we have concluded our meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Is there a second? Mr. Chumley, thank you. I assume no discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Ms. Sandborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Five yes?